Called to order the November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Springville Planning Commission. It is seven thirty-one P M. First, we will have the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion for the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved as written. We have minutes from November fourteenth included in the packet. Are there any changes to the minutes that have not been submitted to staff already?
No.
I don't think so.
I move to.
Okay. Do it again? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. We have two items on the consent agenda tonight. Uh, the consent agenda is administrative actions where no additional discussion is needed. When approved, the recommendations in the staff reports become the action of the commission. Uh, do we have any objections or comments on the consent agenda items?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Uh, without objection, the, uh, items are passed.
Do we have to vote?
We don't have to vote.
We don't have to vote?
Mm-mm.
Oh.
Nope, not on the consent.
Oh, okay.
We have no administrative session items tonight, but we do have three legislative session items, each requiring a public hearing, which we will do for each item. When we will come to that point. The first one is Springville Community Development requests amendments to Springville Code Title eleven, Chapter two, Article three, Board of Adjustment to Comply with Title ten, Chapter nine, A, Part seven, U C A Appeal Authority and Variances. Do we have a presentation tonight?
Um, we're asking for a continuation on that item until our next meeting.
I.
You have to have next.
Really, it agrees.
Yes. Yeah, I just, I simply, we did not get it out to you guys in time for you to review. And so if we can just continue that till next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll just stay here because I'm next. Okay, never mind.
Right. Still being on our agenda, we are required to open the public hearing. So do we have a motion for the public hearing? I'll make the motion for public hearing. Okay, in second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is now open for the item.
Okay. So.
Oh.
Oh, wrong one.
Not seeing anyone coming to the podium, I move to close the public hearing.
Unless you'd really like to comment for the public hearing. Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion for the continuation of this item?
I move to continue this item three to further date.
To the next meeting?
Yeah. Next meeting? Oh, to the next Planning Commission meeting.
The second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, item number three has been continued. Item number four, Springville Community Development requests amendments to Springville Code Titles eleven and fourteen to comply with the requirements of twenty twenty-three Senate Bill one seventy-four Local Land Use and Development Revisions and House Bill four oh six Local Land Use Development and Management Act Modifications.
Okay. Um, so in this last session, um, the state legislature.
Like, get the name on the record?
Oh, do you, oh, yes. Hi.
Hi.
Carla Wisi Planner and Economic Development for Springville City. Okay.
I knew who you were. I just thought.
I know. I, we, I know, we gotta be official, right? Um, so in, um, the last session, Senate Bill one seventy-six was passed along with, um, House Bill four oh six. Senate Bill one seventy-six was, is the majority of what we're looking at today in this. Um, and it, um, sets some criteria for subdivision review, review. Um, when Ludma was originally passed numerous years ago, they were pretty silent on subdivision regulations. And since that time, there have been numerous processes throughout various municipalities and counties for the subdivision review process. And so this was just to, um, kind of get some, um, consistency for the process. And so, um, we are what we ca- what is called a moderate income housing plan city, which means we have to do a moderate income housing plan on our own. So that was the trigger to determine when these needed to be completed by. And we would have to have them in effect by February first of twenty twenty-four. And so that is what we have done. And then H B four oh six, um, addressed the, um, bonding for, um, public landscape improvements. And so they've been combined into, into this one, um, item. So other than, I'm just, if there, if you have any questions, um, the, um, amendments are included. And, um, I kind of broke down what each section was. And we'll just, um, try to answer any questions rather than picking through it one at a time.
So what was the reasoning behind the removal of the sections at the beginnings?
Oh, so that is for the general plan, and that was just kind of a cleanup, um, that we did. It basically restated everything that was said in the general, or excuse me, in the Utah State Code about what a general plan did. And so rather than just having, um, duplicate, we just simply made the statement that we will do a general plan that complies with Utah State Code. And that was it. So it's just kind of a cleanup and that, and we just did that because we've always wanted to clean that section up. So now is a good time to do that.
Where did you add in the language about just being compliant?
So about the, um, so it's already in, so it says, so we just tore, we just took it out because it already, like I said, it, um, was a direct copy of what the code, the state code says about general plans. So we just simply stated, um, under eleven-two-one oh one, general plan and street map, um, that we would, uh, we kept that set, we kept that, um, paragraph. All we did was, um, update the code reference, um, to make sure it was current. Um, and then deleted everything about plan preparation, which is all outlined in state code. And then we did keep the effective general plan for public uses. Um, just so that there is, um, still a statement that our, um, actions from the council and the planning commission need to comply with what's in the general plan. And then everything after that is, there are changes, the, everything after that is, um, from the latest legislation. Um, we had to, um, designate, um, an administrative land use authority. Um, we had to state who that was, and so we've just simply made that our, um, community development director or designee.
Let me ask you a question, question, then on the, when the, when the state code, is the city, what does the city require to do to comply with the state code? Or do they adopt the state code? I mean, it's kind of like building inspection, right?
A little.
Well, we, we'll accept, we'll accept these parts of the state code and then not the others.
No, we're not allowed to do that. So, um, basically what will happen in, um, ten-nine A, which is what they consider, is called Ludma, the Land Use Development and Management Act. Um, as it sets up all of the parameters for land use, um, decisions and power and authority, um, for cities. And so, um, sometimes they will give you a little bit of leeway in what you can do and simply say you must pass this type of thing, how you do it is your, other times they will be very specific, and that is what they have done with the subdivision rewrite. And then with the general plan, they have some very specific things that have to be included. And then items that are, um, able to be included if the city wants to and what are as appropriate with them. Um, and so, but it lays out, in Ludmit lays out the process of who starts it, which is the planning commission. And we had just duplicated all of that. So we just said that we would do it in accordance with the state code because it, it lays it out. So it's a little bit different than building code where we adopt those to be applied. It's state legislation, and so it, we, it's statutory rather than.
So what, what major changes will it make to the city, the way we operate?
For the subdivision?
Yeah.
It does, there's a couple of things that it does that are fairly significant. One is it, um, makes subdivision review for residential subdivisions only. This does not apply to commercial, and that is one thing that, and I'll get to that when we go through it. So, um, the resid, the state, the changes in state law only apply, apply to single-family residential, um, townhomes or, um, duplexes. Um, and does not apply to condominiumized, um, residential or multifamily residential. They put the, they kept those out of this section. Basically what it does is it limits the amount, the, the review process. So for a preliminary plan, you must respond within fifteen, the plant, the city has to respond in fifteen days. It doesn't set any requirement for the developer to have to respond to us. It only controls the actions of the city and the, and the process for the city side. So we have to, we have to turn around, within fifteen days, um, all of our re, um, comments and, um, changes that need to be made on their preliminary plan.
What about, I'm sorry, I realize that.
Go ahead.
So if, if they, uh, in the scenario, let's say they submit a plan to us, and then the clock starts, right?
Mm-hmm.
Fifteen days. And then they say their information was incomplete, then at the end of fifteen days, then we can tell them, here's the information you need to provide us. Because we can't comment on something if it's incomplete, right?
Yeah, so typically what will happen, and Josh can maybe speak to this a little bit more than I can as far as the details. But they, so a developer will submit a plan, we'll review it, we send it around to, um, all of our various departments, engineering, power, water, everyone. Um, and then we have fifteen days to make comments on it. Now, we will not accept an application that is not complete. And so we will, we have a, we will have, the city council will adopt a checklist that lists everything you have to have in that. And that will be reviewed, um, for completeness. And if we find that something is not turned in that needs to be, then we will not accept the application. So they'll turn in a complete, but what will be reviewed is they may not have the right specifications on pipes that engineering requires. Or they may not have laid something out correctly. So all of our departments will redline this. And now, the other thing that this requires is that now we can't ju- uh, some cities tend to be rather arbitrary. And so that's where a lot of this has come from. I'm sure that you're familiar with that. Springville has always done really well for our, to say, this is our specification, this, and, you know, refer to that specification when making notes on and redlines on a plan. Um, and now the state simply requires that you do that and that you provide where that specification is to the developer so that they know that you're not being arbitrary. So then we respond to them with the redlines. They can come in and make their changes, um, and that we've asked for them to if. And this is where there is still some question from the powers that be, as far as, um, the Utah League of Cities and Towns attorneys and other, um, land use attorneys that have looked at it. The most recent consensus, and I say that by actually this afternoon, they said that the preliminary plan review, there is not a limit on the number of reviews as long as you respond within that fifteen days.
Right.
And for the final review, you have, you only get four reviews. And, but if the developer doesn't make the changes that you request, that does not count as a review cycle. They have to respond to the changes that have been, or the revisions and requests for revisions that have been made by the city. If they don't, that doesn't count as a review cycle. If the city does not put in something, they leave it out, then they basically waive the right to that, which is kind of how we have always acted as, you know, um, that if, if we are not responding to it, then, and we're not saying you need to be in it, then that, our department, that's a, that's the fault of the city in making those errors. And so that's why we're kind of on people to make sure that they're doing their reviews and checking them. And so then they, so they only get, um, but we, but the city will only get four reviews.
Four reviews on the preliminary, right?
No, for, right now they're saying unlimited on the preliminary, four on the final.
And what's the difference between the criteria for preliminary and final?
Um, can you respond to that a little bit more than I can?
Generally preliminary is, uh, horizontal plans, like the planning plan and preliminary engineering horizontal alignments. We don't have plans and profiles and construction documents in a preliminary subdivision. That, all of that happens in final where we actually have plans and profiles and all of the.
The slope and the sewer and the water. The reason I ask is, it's kind of interesting, especially for me, because I've experienced it on both sides. And I have a greater appreciation for the fifteen day deadline now because it's like, you know, wow, it's, it's hard to get to that. So if, what I'm trying to understand is if, say for example, it goes through the preliminary review and they forget a fire hydrant. Let's just say the water department somehow misses a fire hydrant that needs to be put into there for, you know, that's mandatory, should be, that they missed that on the draw. And they didn't put it in the comments on the first review, are we able to come back to that?
Yes. If there are issues of health and safety, then those are allowed. If they're just, uh, well, we'd like you to put in a.
Want red brick instead of brown brick.
Exactly, exactly.
Proper, uh, curb returning detail here.
Okay, or something like that. That makes sense.
If they apply, if they, if they are part of health and safety, um, then the, that, does that waiver, does not apply.
Okay, that's what I was curious about.
Yeah.
Because I've seen it before with some cities where they go through the first review and then like the electrical department reviews it. And then it comes back with all the electrical reviews, but then the second review comes in, all of a sudden it's the water department.
Yeah.
And so you're, you know, it's kind of hard to cope with that, but at the same time, I, I appreciate the fact that we have to be able to say, look, this is the things we need to do for health, safety, and city standards, because, okay.
Yeah.
And our, our review process is a parallel review by all departments. Uh, they all comment through an electronic system and that is compiled and then provided to the applicant.
Is that prior to like a D R C or something?
That, yeah, that is.
That's part of the D R C process, and then we, we call DR, our development review committee. And we do actually have a meeting at the end of each review cycle where we get together and, uh, the applicants are some, sometimes present if they'd like to be. But we get together and just review the plans and go over the comments. Uh, that may change, uh, with, as Carla mentioned, for final, uh, we have fifteen days to respond.
We have twenty on final.
Okay, we have twenty.
We have fifteen on preliminary, twenty on final with the fourth cycle.
We have twenty on final, and right now our review cycle runs on a two-week cycle, so if.
Already fourteen.
It's already fourteen days, so if you apply on Thursday and the cycle started Wednesday, then you're gonna wait two weeks before we start your cycle. And then two weeks before that review comes, so we're gonna have to adjust our process to basically respond on a rolling basis.
Well, the other thing that I've seen other cities do is that they say we only accept applications on this day of the week. So, you know, or this twice a month, or so that they can meet that, you know what I'm saying? Because if you came in the day after that cycle, then there's anticipation that I won't have to have a full review as opposed to saying I want, you know, you can, we'll only accept application in these days.
And it's unclear whether that's something we can do or not, but we're, we need to go through that process and developing or calibrating our process.
Anyway, that might be a suggestion.
Yeah.
See, you know, that way it helps it for both parties, because then as they're sitting there trying to figure out, how do I stage my project? How do I do it? Well, here's the hoops I have to jump through, and it's clear, it's concise. And I can, I can only apply twice a month, so don't, don't come to me on Tuesday night. It, when it was Tuesday morning, it had to be submitted by. And that, I think it helps from a developer standpoint, better than it does to have it be like on a rolling cycle. That would be my opinion anyway.
That's how we do it right now. We're just not sure yet whether that will hold up.
And I think Springville does a good job with that, by the way. Having experienced it from the other side, both sides, there are, there are some cities here that the process can last for months and months as, as this, as each, you can see it, Department one meets the deadline, boom. All of a sudden, Department two, it's like, well, where did this come from? We didn't see this on the, oh, well, we didn't have a chance to look at it yet.
Yes, and that, that has, has been a lot of what kind of spurred this legislation was, um, that, um, it was very haphazard depending upon, you know, which municipality you happen to be in.
Does Springville, um, do they do an outside plan check, or do we do our internal plan checks?
For building permits or for?
For any of this, is all of this done internal?
All internal, yes.
Even building permits as well?
Yes. Yes. So, okay, and then, so like I was saying, this only applies to residential. So one of the main changes that looks probably a lot more significant than it is, is to, um, for chapter three, which, um, Article one, we'd always had this reserved for commercial subdivisions, so we were finally able to use it. And so basically what we did was because we don't have to apply this four-review cycle to commercial subdivisions, we chose not to. Um, commercial can sometimes be a little bit more complicated, can, um, be, there's just, there's differences. And so we just took our old subdivision review that we applied across the board, put it in here for our commercial subdivision, um, and then updated and made specific changes for residential in, um, chapter two. Does that make sense, kind of? So, so chapter three is just simply the creation of a commercial and industrial subdivision. And we defined a commercial, um, subdivision as being multifamily condominium, commercial or industrial, um, in nature. And the sub, and the residential subdivision, um, applying only to single-family, two-family and townhomes. And then, any, what was that?
Oh, one question on this one, on chapter three. I don't know, page forty-two. At the very top, it defines administrative land use authority and says it does not include the planning commission. But in chapter two, the administrative land use authority means an individual board or commission appointed, including the planning commission.
Yeah, okay, and so there, like, there may be, yeah, there may be a few, I miss. So what we've also done is, is this legislation allowed for, um, subdivisions, because they are an administrative uh, action, to be taken away from the planning commission? And so that is what we have done. It, they will, the subdivisions will no longer come before the planning commission. There will no longer be a public hearing. They'll be done through an administrative, um, action. They'll still be posted for public noticing, um, and public comment, but they will not be, um, but the, um, they will no longer come to the commission for review or a public hearing.
They didn't have public hearings before, though.
Yeah, to clarify, they, we did not, there weren't, there's no public hearings on an administrative item. And generally, uh, all subdivisions come as consent items because they really are administrative. And then go to the city council, which wa- was a duplicative step, but at least they were on consent, uh, uh, so they typically were moved quickly. Uh, that's another big underpinning motivation for this, uh, legislation is cities that require multiple times back to planning commission, multiple times to city council or mandate public hearings for these type of administrative items, which is both legally and from a, you know, public perception standpoint, really problematic. Because you were, you're essentially opening a public forum to people to express their concerns about something that they can't do anything about. Uh, and so people get really frustrated when they come to a public hearing and say how bad something is gonna be and we, you know, it meets the codes, we have to approve it. So taking that, that was a big element of this. There's some cities that we might call the, the bad actor cities that have really encumbered the process with additional meetings and hearings, and so that was a big part of this.
Yeah, there have been cities that then the public, you know, the quote-unquote public clamor about a subdivision, um, they had then taken that into an account and made, and made decisions based on that, that they legally weren't able to do. Um, and so then, so that has muddied up the process. Um, and then also on the other side, when the public has commented, and like, um, Josh said, the public has commented, had, felt that they were being able to have some sway in, in the decision, and then, no, been, been told, no, sorry. It was, it was somewhat disingenuous to give them the opportunity to think that they would be able to make, have some influence on the decisions that were going to be made. So it kind of worked both ways, um, as, as far as, um, not sending the, the right message to, um, either, you know, developers or to, to residents. So, um, I will make that change, um, from, I, I may have missed some, so from over from the commercial to the other, I will, um, we will.
Should not include the planning.
It will not include the planning commission.
So you're going to, because it's new text in both sections.
It's new text because we had never had anything in chapter three, so everything is new there, um, and I may have just missed, um.
What's the citation for the other?
Um, page twenty-two, fourteen dash two dash one oh two definitions is the first definition is administrative land use authority.
Okay.
And the other one's on forty-two.
Yes, I've got the one on forty-two. Okay, we will make that change. Thank you for notes.
How on earth do we define this differently in two places?
This was, this was my favorite thing ever. Yeah.
It looks like a little time.
Yeah, so, um, and then on, there was also some, um, changes on the public landscaping bonds that came from, um, House Bill four oh six. Um, we simply cannot require bonds for any, um, landscape improvements that are not going to be dedicated over to the city. And so, um, if they're, they have to be considered public landscaping improvements that we require, that will then be dedicated to the city as ownership and maintenance. Um, and those are the only ones that we can require landscape bonds on, not any that will be.
Is that both commercial and residential or just commercial?
It's for any public, it's basically anything that will be, that will be dedicated over to the city.
So some cities that require a bond now to have somebody fin- landscape their front yard within a certain period of time, that's no longer?
There's a, there's a different, it will not apply to any H O A, um, C C N Rs that an H O A may have. Um, yes, or, um, any, um, zoning ordinances that cities have regarding front yard. It was just for if a developer came in and we required that they put in, um, trees on private and that we would, they would bond for that.
Like mold strips and stuff like that would be?
Yes, but we can no longer require bonding for any landscaping on private property, period.
Yeah.
Got you. And when is that effective?
That, we actually, that actually went in effect right after the legislature, um, recessed in May. I, but I think it was May thirtieth was that, so we have, we have stopped that. Um, we just haven't codified it.
That's great, that's great.
So now it's a code enforcement action?
Or a development agreement, yeah.
Or a development agreement.
I guess I ought to go get my money back, huh? It's not with Springville City, so.
Well, you should get your money back if you did the work, right?
The bonding, so, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, as, as we met with our city attorney, John Penrod, about whether or not we should, um, keep the landscape bonds that we had that had been done previous to this legislation, he just felt that it would be easier to, to just let those go. And so we've done that and, um, have, have acted on that, and now we're just codifying it.
Thank you.
So that's about all I got for you.
All the stuff that's crossed out on the, the twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, all those are existing somewhere else?
No, so what those are, um, we also, in an attempt to simplify, so we had listed everything that we required on a plan. The north arrow, you have to, you know, I mean, very detailed of what we expected and planned, we put that, we, we had it codified. And we wanted to make sure that we weren't overcomplicating the process. Um, and so, um, what we did is that you'll see we referred to what we call a preliminary plan, residential plan checklist, which will list all those things, um, so that we're still getting everything that we need. And then, um, also a commercial plan checklist for both preliminary and final. Um, and John and Chris, our legal team, suggested that we have those adopted by. Um, and John and Chris, our legal team, suggested that we have those adopted by the city council, um, so that those checklists are adopted, so we do have something, some enforcement power behind them. Um, we just took them out of code because it was a lot to have in code, you know, that you have to have, you know, your, where you are putting your street addresses and all of that was, was listed as part of our, um, actual development code, so.
Philosophically, I'm really interested in getting everything out of our land use ordinance that isn't specifically a land use regulation or is something that is more a, uh, a procedure or a policy. And especially something that can change, uh, more often than a land use regulation. Like, if we add something to our checklist or we take something off the checklist, because we don't need four sets of eleven-by-seventeen plans anymore. Uh, that we can just do that through simply updating that checklist instead of going back through this land use amendment process. And it just thins out the code. I've been responsible for adding too many pages of code since I've been here, so I'm just trying to.
Offset?
Offset.
Yeah, that, that's basically.
I've got a long way to go.
So, the checklist will just be a website on the city's website, kind of?
On our application form online and on the website.
Is it, is it updated and notified by date or something?
So, um.
We always put a date underneath the heading when it was adopted.
So, that they'll know.
Of when, yes, of when it was adopted. Um, and then, um, it also allows, because with our minor residential subdivisions, and even with minor commercial, we often don't request everything that we do for a much larger subdivision. And so, it, the code says that minor subdivision, you have to basically turn in what the community development director says you have to. And so, this allows us to do on that checklist to say, yeah, we need this and this, you don't need to worry about this and this. Um, and so, um, it will be available both electronically, we will also have hard copies available. And in the electronic versions, um, and in this, as we get it set up with, um, the codifiers, who put it on our website, um, that those will be hyperlinked so that people will be able to access, have, it'll be a little bit user, more user-friendly as well.
So, the, the check gate's basically at planning when they submit the, submit it, right? And you're going through the checklist, oh, we have this additional, or, oh, you didn't need that, or whatever, so.
Yeah, that's the, the first step when we receive an application is a completeness review.
Yes, and that, and that, and that completeness review will be based upon the requirements in the checklist.
The final plan checklist is adopted by the city council.
Yes, that's the one. And also, because this is not required to go into effect until February first, um, when it goes before the city council, um, we will put that as the date that it goes into effect. That will give us a couple of months that we need to make sure that our checklists are current, that we have exactly what they are, and that they're ready to go. Because like you said, we don't need paper copies of things anymore, and so, we'll make those changes, make sure, as engineering, um, has been updating their specifications, that everything is, um, complimentary and, and works together.
Is the city still printing off, um, paper copies to supply to anybody? Are they all doing it electronic?
Oh, so, we do have checklists and, and form, not forms, but.
No, no, I mean plans when they.
For engineering.
For engineering, are they just, are they?
No, it's all circulated.
It's all circulated through, um, what we call Blue Beam. It's a program that we use that allows them to make their changes, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure you're familiar with it, yeah.
Yeah, I just was wondering if the city is now printing them off because they want to look at the plan instead of on the screen. Some of the plans get so big, it's really difficult, so, that's why I was just.
An engineer may do it, or a certain department may do it to look at their stuff, but the actual changes are made electronically.
Both of our engineers have giant TVs on their walls, they're spoiled.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's nice.
Yeah, but that's nice.
Um, yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Laser pointers.
So, yeah, it's all done electronically now.
And retained electronically.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Oh, that same definition.
Well, some cities are still requiring, uh, print out like fifteen copies of full-size plans for each review, so that's why I was asking, so.
Yeah.
They, you have to submit it electronically, but the, their justification for that is, is the city's going to have to print them off anyway. So, if you just give it to us electronically, our guys are, you know, they, they want it on a hard copy, so, anyway, I just was curious.
Yeah, that's.
I didn't know how the internal, because we don't want to bear that burden if that's what the, you know, if the developer, that's, if that's the cost.
Yeah, nobody, there's, haven't been any internal demand for that.
Yeah, so, that's what we're.
Okay, any other questions or clarifications?
It's a riveting read, I just, so I inhale that, um.
I was wondering if it makes sense to continue this item, I'm, maybe I'm out of order, but does it make sense to make those changes you've talked about and then just bring it back to the next meeting?
I, I will, I will act as you would like me to act, I have no problem.
Which changes?
Um, just the definitions that we had of administrative land use authority are not consistent through, I didn't catch all the changes. Um, as far as I know, um, that's.
We just said that we, we recommend approval with the changes discussed.
I hadn't noticed it, you were good on catching that.
I know, see, I count on.
I wondered if there's anything else that we just hadn't seen, like that same thing, so.
Because there's a lot of.
Yeah, there's so much there.
There's like forty-eight pages of words.
Now that we understand it, it was hard to understand why we were.
I know, it's, it's.
Chopping out.
So, it's kind of like reading Ivanhoe. Um, so, yeah, I, it, it, it will, whatever, if you feel that you would like to have a little bit more time to make sure and, um, make sure that I've caught everything or that, you know, I've responded to any catches that you guys made, it's completely up to you.
But this isn't going to go to city council for?
We are going to have it in a work session, um, simply because, um, they, since they don't get the public hearing time real, you know, and we want to be able to, um, equate, um, educate them a little bit more.
We do have, uh, our plan and our desire is to be able to take this to the seated council. Uh, so, if we were to continue it, then, uh, we wouldn't be, probably wouldn't be able to make that schedule, but we can accommodate that.
Yeah.
If that's, if that's a concern.
Do they have one meeting in December or two?
They have two, but the first one is on the fifth.
Next week.
Yeah.
How confident are you that we have consistency, that we're, because I just think maybe extra set of eyes might help. I think your plan's awesome and it worked, should work great, I'm just saying, we can review it a little. I, I read, I tried, okay, I, I, I literally tried several times, but I didn't quite understand why now it makes a lot more sense.
With a little bit of context, it makes a lot more sense, what you're reading and what you're looking for, yes. It, it is completely, I will act at your direction, so.
Okay. Do you have any questions before we open our public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Okay, do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is now open for item number four. Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing, do we have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the public hearing is now closed. Um, any discussion on this item?
I, I feel confident that staff will be able to, to go through and, and before this, it comes to the city council, to just double-check those things and make sure that the consistencies are in there as well.
Okay, thank you.
I, I personally, I'd like to look, look through it a little bit more now that I have better understanding, but I can do that. I can do that on my own and make a phone call if I need to or whatever else. But I think it's good for us to at least, now we understand it a little better. It's a, it's a lot of change that we have in here, so that's just my opinion, so.
Okay. Well, I agree too. I think it would be okay to move forward and, and you've still got to go to a work session, right?
Yes, we have to.
And then, Ralph, if you feel good about it, then looking at if you have concern.
I'll look through it, if I have any notes or comments, I can ask questions before, so.
I don't have issues, I think it's just cleaning things up and streamlining and making it easier.
Okay. Well, then, do we have a motion?
I move to recommend approving the amendments to Springville City Code Titles eleven and fourteen to comply with the twenty-twenty-three SB one seventy-four Local Land Use and Development Revisions Requirements and HB four oh six Local Land Use Development and Management Act Modifications with the changes as discussed.
Okay, we have a second or?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number five, Springville Community Development Requests Amendment to Springville Code Title eleven, Chapter four, Section three oh one, Land Use Matrix to Refine the Permitted Uses in the Main Street South Gateway Zone.
Is the continuance item too?
Uh, it's a.
Oh. Well, now we're, we'll just be pleasantly surprised.
It's literally the, uh, simplest amendment I think I've perhaps ever brought to the planning commission. So, uh, all it, I didn't even make a presentation because we're literally changing one letter in one box. So, uh, the city council, when we, uh, reviewed, when we did the zone map amendment to extend the Main Street South Gateway Zone to the south in, in the spring, uh, from the south part of Main Street, from four south to eight south, so, the city council asked us just to review the land use matrix, uh, for that zone to make sure that all the uses that we had permitted or not permitted were aligned with the zone. There wasn't anything in there we didn't, we really didn't want in the Main Street area or anything we had missed. So, we went and finally got through that process. And based on our review, there was really nothing that is permitted or conditional that, uh, was something we didn't want in the zone. But there was something we missed that we hadn't noticed previously that may have, that would have definitely been an issue, especially on the Allen's Block. And that is down here in retail sales. You can see that at this line, there is no designation for general retail stores less than fifteen thousand square feet, uh, which means that they're not permitted. Uh, so, we want to add a P to that box to allow general retail stores as it's kind, less than fifteen thousand square feet, as that's kind of an essential component of our downtown. And that is, that's the whole sum of the amendment.
I don't know, that seems a little, uh, crazy to me.
We've got less than twenty thousand, so I don't.
Why do we have?
I don't know why you need less than fifteen if you got less than twenty.
Yeah.
Are those not redundant? All the lessons are a little bit.
Yeah.
Everything, shouldn't there be a range or so? So, it's like less than.
Mathematically, when you set up the, the series of inequalities or whatever you call that, if you're a math teacher, it doesn't make sense, but we'll stick a P in there. It's re, it's really based on how our, uh, it aligns with our business license categories, uh.
What if you put something in there, like we said, that, you know, between two thousand square feet and fifteen thousand?
We can definitely do that, uh, upon your recommendation, I have absolutely no issue with that.
Or is that just muddying the waters?
No, I, I mean, you could just say, uh.
Well, this just allows for different flexibility for all the different zones, all right?
Right, but.
Allows you to go.
Already got a twenty thousand foot, but apparently it's a license, more of a licensing situation.
Yeah, if you, if a zone has twenty-five thousand, wouldn't it buy, you know?
No, I, I realize for that specific one, yeah.
So, maybe.
I think what you're trying to say is no greater than fifteen thousand, no greater than twenty thousand, as caps rather than.
Right, except when you get down to general retail, it has, uh, less than or equal to eighty, and then general retail stores greater than eighty thousand square feet. So, somebody knew how the inequality symbols worked when they wrote it, which is.
The alligators.
Right. But I'm happy to make it general retail store zero to fifteen thousand square feet, fif, you know, fifteen oh one to twenty, twenty oh one to.
I don't think it really matters if we put it less than fifteen, if it has to be something for more or less licensing of a store.
Yeah.
Well, it, it only matters if you try to put something bigger in. But then it should be.
Do we have these in definitions or anything, or is?
No.
That permitted use column the only time we?
Some, some of the uses are defined in definitions, but, uh, we can double-check. I do not believe that these different categories of, uh, retail sales are defined. So, if we go down to definitions, now I just use the computer. General retail sales.
Okay.
You've already done the P though, right? You already did it, right?
Uh, proposing it.
That's what I mean, it's already.
Yeah, it's in the, in the packet.
I don't know, I, I think it, it may make sense to look at those and see if they should be clarified better in the sense that I could read that backwards and say, well, it doesn't say I can't put in an eighty thousand square foot.
Right.
In this zone, it just says I can put in less than fifteen, less than twenty, less than sixty, you know?
Where that's covered is, uh, in the, kind of the preamble to the, uh, land use matrix. Actually, no, it's at the end. It's in here somewhere that says uses not listed, uh, are not permitted. And let.
Blank box not allowed?
No. Well, there's actually a statement somewhere that says uses, unless the uses are expressly permitted, they aren't allowed. So, you could say, well, it doesn't, there's not a category for horse barn, so can I do it? Uh, no, you, you can't, because the, the presumption is that it's, uh, permitted only if it's expressly permitted.
Just like nowhere in this chart does it say high-density housing.
Right, it says dwelling multiple family.
I think it should be clarified that it's the range from this to this. Because right now, it technically says that everything less than eighty thousand is a certain set of conditional and permitted uses. But then, other numbers that are below eighty thousand have different conditional and permitted uses.
They already got in there one that says less than twenty-five, so I mean.
Yeah.
It, it just, you know.
Yeah.
I don't, what's the difference between less than twenty-five and less than fifteen?
Nothing.
It comes down to what Josh says, that it becomes a, a business licensing situation that.
Yeah.
We're trying to clarify, I just, don't, let's not make it more complicated than what we need to, I guess, is all I'm saying.
You're.
But if he wants to break it down and go, you know, on a table, that's fine too.
Whereas which scenario is going to help avoid any misunderstanding or conflict with a, a future developer who says, no, I read the table, this is this way, and we say, no, it actually means this way, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Clarity is sometimes helps to avoid that.
But does it get more, um? Yeah, because the one, like, in one of them, it says eighty thou, less than eighty thousand, and it's a blank box, so it's not permitted.
So, that would be like zero to eighty thousand.
So, then, everything, everything. So then, everything, everything less than eighty thousand, that's not permitted technically.
Well, it's, it's, it shows as a conditional, so they have to come as a conditional permit.
Well, like, in the, the Village Center, everything less than eighty thousand is not allowed to have general retail stores. But, but once it gets to twenty-five and twenty, it's conditional, and then fifteen thousand square feet, it's permitted. So, like, those are technically conflicting or contradicting each other.
Yeah, and in other codes I've worked in, these are handled in the text of each individual code. But our code is set up in a way that was novel to me when I started here in that you don't go to the R one code, R one five code to see what the setbacks are. You go to the setback table and look for R one, and it tells you what the setbacks are. So everything is aggregated into tables instead of a set, different section for each zone, which makes it really handy because you can cross-reference, and you know, in Provo, each zone had its own use list. So if you wanted to know what zone could I do X use in, you had to go find the mate, the Excel sheet that somebody made a couple of years ago so we could see, or you had to go to each zone and read through it, and oh, it's permitted in this one. So this is generally better, but it did, has created kind of a odd condition here.
That is weird.
I think if you put the P in, it's clear to me, but that's just, I'm reading it from a.
I mean, that'd be.
From my, my perspective and my, you know what I mean, it's nice to have it, it's nice to have all the different columns because you're gonna, the rows, excuse me, because you may want to make change there, you, things may change. And so obviously, some of the things are overstated because you're less than forty, less than thirty-five, less than twenty-five, but it still gives you a criteria you can quickly look at and say, no, I'm not gonna buy that property, or, yeah, that's, this is a good option.
And it could be simplified simply by reversing the inequality, so it read, general retail stores less than fifty thou, fifteen, or, uh.
Less than or equal to?
Equal to or less than fifteen thousand, no.
No.
It was all right in my brain before I opened my mouth, I promise. Uh, retail stores not to exceed fifteen thousand square feet, not to exceed, uh, twenty thousand square feet, not to exceed, however you would write that.
Probably just with those words.
Up, yeah.
Or no greater than, or something.
But if you do that, then do you have to start at zero and go all the way up?
You'd go zero to fifteen, you know, greater than fifteen, no greater than twenty, because I don't know that there's, I, I think these are the extent of the categories that we use in licensing.
Okay. Well, that, if that's mirrors with licensing, then stay, stay with what mirrors with licensing.
Would you say like up to?
Yeah.
Retail, general retail stores up to fifteen hundred square feet are permitted in Village Commercial? Or Village Center, and then general retail stores up to twenty thousand square feet are permitted?
Use the not greater than symbol?
Yeah.
Is there a not greater?
It's pretty, it's pretty standard.
Yeah, it's like a slash through, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, that's not equal to.
Well, a greater than with a slash, not greater than.
I guess we've taken off the simple table that you talked about.
It's still simple, I.
Yeah, well, because we're not talking about changing the table, we're just changing the definitions of the permitted uses.
Because we, it's clear what it's trying to do, but when we look at it closer, it's clear that it.
Maybe we just give direction to have a look at it, and if need be, we can.
If you just tell me you want it to indicate that it's general retail stores, no greater than fifteen thousand, we'll make sure that whatever we write in there says that.
Yeah, and the, the same for the other.
Right.
Subsequent.
Yeah.
Yep, and that's really how we look at it in business licensing. If it's up to fifteen thousand square feet, it's this license, if it's up to twenty, it's this, if it's, uh, you know, between twenty and twenty-five, it's this.
It's not unusual for us to make code amendments that are things just like this, just to make sure, little teeny tweaks to make them more.
Often not all by themselves, uh, just because.
Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes we're reluctant to write a staff report for, for one letter, uh, but in this case, uh, it wasn't a big deal.
Yeah. Usually my goal with, with stuff like this is just, whatever we can do to make it easily read by anybody.
Yes.
You know, as somebody who's a developer, has lots of experience, can glance at it and go, yeah, I know what you mean here. My neighbor next door, not necessarily, that's just my goal.
Yeah, agreed, it's a good goal to have with the code.
Yeah, shouldn't need a law degree to understand it. Um, this is also a public hearing, do we have any questions for Director Yost before we move to public hearing? Okay, thank you.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, public hearing is now open for item number five.
Seeing no one coming forward, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, public hearing is now closed, discussion on item five. Beyond, anything beyond what we've already said?
We've had a lot of chat, so. I'm prepared to make a motion.
By all means.
Uh, mo, I move to recommend approval of the amendment to Springville Code Title eleven, Chapter four, Section three zero one, Land Use Matrix to Refine the Permitted Uses in the Main Street South Gateway Zone with the addition of clarification on general retail stores categories, or permitted uses.
Let's look at the motion.
Okay, I think that works. Uh, we have motion and a second, any comments on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, that concludes our agenda, uh, we have one meeting or two meetings in December.
One.
One. Yeah, because that would be the, the second week, fourth week is Christmas week, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth.
It's Boxing Day, yeah.
Okay.
So for all of you Anglophiles, enjoy.
It's gonna be a good day.
It's my grandmother's birthday.
Ah, nice.
She'll be turning ninety-nine. Big day.
Oh, yeah, my grandma will be turning ninety-nine too.
Oh, yeah.
But she died twenty years ago.
Oh.
That was good, oh, yeah, that's a good one. It's, you obviously needed to have longer discussions about things because you were still pretty sharp on that one.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned.